Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started. Evelyn, roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Walz.
Here.
Trustee Lozick.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present. Good evening, everyone. If you need translation, we have translation available for you to, if you so desired. If you're here, you can let us know, and we'll provide translation for you. Si necesitas o requieres interpretación en español y estás en casa, por favor llame al 978 990 5137 y presione 8377041 y el número para contraseña. Speaking at the board meeting, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card. If you're here, please give it to Evelyn. If you're at home, please sign up on the Google Doc document. You will be allotted three minutes per speaker. If you need translation, we would double that to six minutes. And second items that are on the agenda are voted on simultaneously with one motion. So if you want to speak to the board on any of those items, please let us know now so that we can pull them off and fill out a speaker's card. And if we could turn off our, or not turn off, but turn down our phones and watch it be mine that starts vibrating, right? Okay, do we have any additions, dilutions, or modifications to the agenda?
I was gonna propose that we move the two HR action items unless there's more to discuss. Eight point three, the local inter-agency agreement for education training, and eight point four, the approval of personnel changes to the consent agenda.
Any others? No, then I would also like to move eleven point one, which is correspondence right after oral communication. And with that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Can I make a comment before we move forward? I had noted on item six point two, and Will was gonna speak on that now.
Great. I think you could just, it's just a simple correction. If he could address it, then that's it, yeah.
You guys want me to speak to it now or add section six of the agenda?
Wait until the item comes up, please. Thank you.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Oh, that's. All in favor? Aye. It's good to be all here together, huh? Okay, so Evelyn, do we have any speakers cars this evening?
Thank you.
Oh.
One more time. Okay, thank you. At your last board meeting on September twenty first, I asked the board to direct Dr. Baker to remove the bond information from the taxpayer-funded district-controlled website and newsletter, and you did not do that. Then on September twenty sixth, I followed up via email and formally requested that you put this topic on this agenda today. And again, you decided not to do that. I did have an exchange with your bond attorney, whom I notably, I believe, is paid only if the bond is approved. And he incorrectly concluded that everything is fine as it is, and citing one irrelevant case involving Salinas, which is a city, and not even the subject to the same education code that laws that district is. So I responded back to the attorney on October second with a detailed analysis, including relevant cases that our schools and that rightfully established the conclusion that bond information must be taken down. I demanded this be done by October fifth, which, again, you chose not to do. You did, however, modify your website for some of the examples that I gave that were a clear violation of seven oh five four B. In other words, some statements that were argumentative, speculative, and falsehoods were fixed. Others still remain. For example, stating forty-eight cents a day is both an argument. An argument by definition is a reason to do or not do something, and that's a reason to do something. Phrasing it that way. So it's an argument and a falsehood. I think. Then parcel taxes that can't be used for buildings, that's a falsehood. Measure S will maintain property values, that's speculation. So these are all things that still exist. Nonetheless, even if you did satisfy section seven oh five four, which you did not and are not presenting, which is presenting impartial and relevant facts, section seven oh five eight is a requirement for equitable access, which nonetheless still applies. Why? Because the district controls the website and the newsletter. And again, the cases that I sent you on October second are the german ones. So you cannot have your cake and eat it too. You can't, you either need to take the bond down, like Sequoia did properly, once they were, I pointed it out to them, or you need to make sure that any bond information is impartial, set of relevant facts to the electorate. The two conditions for seven oh five four. And, not or, and you need to provide equitable access. And I understand you don't want to provide equitable access to me because I have relevant facts. And I know that in your employee, Dr. Baker does not want to provide it, so that's fine. And the only alternative, which I'm once again demanding that the board do on the record, is remove the bond information from the website and suspend any newsletter that contains bond information. The second issue is, I would like, I'm requesting that you comply with the Public Records Act. Several weeks ago, and I got kind of a put-off letter from a bond attorney, which he's not the records maintenance person, saying, oh, then on the ninth day, here's a website, which is just the bond docs, which of course, board docs, which I know. And then we'll get back to you on the other ones on, I think it's the eighteenth. That's ridiculous. We're in the middle of a bond. I need that information to be, and I don't want my speech suppressed. So none of the, I will be here tomorrow at two o'clock to go through the records. That's the law. There should be an inspection person for that, and I will plan on meeting somebody here at two o'clock. And if there's any reason that that's not possible, I would like to know as soon as possible. I don't want to talk to the bond attorney. That's a person that's conflicted in my mind, in my opinion. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers, Evelyn? Okay.
There's maybe one other speaker that was not able to dial in. So I, I, in the, again, that was possibly a thing, but I did record something for him, so I guess I can play it. This is an outside speaker.
Did that speaker complete a card?
No, he, I think so. He says that's not required per the Brown Act. So it's not required to have a speaker card. That's a violation of the, requiring that is a violation of the Brown Act, is my understanding. You can check with your attorney, but that's, that's a.
No, you need to have a speaker's card. It's part of the Brown Act. That's part of the Brown Act when you're in a.
I'm not an attorney, so if you're saying that I'm not allowed to play somebody's recorded oral communications, and you're not gonna receive that despite Maria's statement earlier about welcoming public comment, and you need to have names and everything else, then I will take that as your, is that your position?
That's my position.
That's your attorney's position? Okay.
Okay. Moving on to eleven point one, which is correspondence. Mr. Robel, would you please stay? Thank you. So, we received correspondence from Mr. Robel, which I think we all got. Normally, we don't address any of these issues. However, Mr. Robel this evening has referred to our attorney as the bond attorney. First of all, let me say thank you for coming. We encourage everyone to participate, whether we agree with them or not. This is a democracy, and it's not easy. However, please understand that unlike large districts like LA Unified and San Diego and others, we don't have an attorney that works for the district. We hired a law firm to do those kind of works for us. So the attorney that you refer to is not a bond attorney. He is the attorney that works for the law firm that we contract with. And they do different work, not just on the bond, but on human resources, et cetera. We also have county council. They also work for us doing other work, again, because we don't have an in-house attorney. So with respect to your request to have access to the records, we're doing everything we can. You are correct that you have not received such information, and that is due to the fact that we changed vendors. When we went from one vendor to the other, those records of those minutes that you are requesting and that information were left with that company. So we are trying our best to get that up and going again and retrieve that information. The rest of it is up on board docs. It's not that we're being difficult. I can honestly tell you that is what's happening. Okay. Right, hold on. You also stated in your email that you wanted to know what we thought. And when I took my oath of officer, I took the oath not to say what I think of the law, but to follow the law. Now, Mr. Turnick, this is a Tunic, sorry, sorry, Will. Provided us with an opinion. I am not a judge. I am not an attorney. I rely on that information. If you say that you don't agree with it, then we will have to tell Mr. Tunic and that law firm that you don't agree and to provide us with that information again. Because I'm not versed on the law when it comes to that. So it's not that we don't want to comply. I'm relying on what I'm being told, and so are my colleagues. You also referred to something to do with the website for the bond measure. We don't have anything to do with them. I don't know who puts it up. You will have to address those issues to them. And they. Okay, well, I think in your email you referred to it. So, anyway, I just wanted to have the opportunity to tell you that this is the case. And I will ask Mr. Tunic, Tunic?
Tunic.
To again, review those of the information you provided and to provide some more clarification. Again, if you still don't agree, there are other resources, I'm sure, that are available. And you are free to go forward with those as well. And I will find out about the request, you being here tomorrow at two o'clock, and see what can be done about that. Okay, now, do any of you wish to say anything else? Thank you for coming again, and thank you for your understanding. Now, we also received this evening, or, well, I guess it was from September twenty second, the letter from the County Office of Education regarding our local control accountability plan and adopted budget, and I am happy to report that it has been approved. I will have Evelyn scan it if you'd like to go through it. And we also had one more email from an employee who is not in agreement with some issues that HR should take care of. Were there any other? Okay, then let us move right along to item six, the bond program consent items. And Will, if you could speak to item six point two?
Yes, so six point two, under financial impact. The first four words total, or first statement, total for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three should be removed. We report on 20K and under list every, you know, month or so. And it's a, it's a running total, so seventy thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents is just for this list. There have been lists in the past that pertain to twenty-two, twenty-three, and there will be lists in the future. My apologies that that note got added. It will not be there in the future when we send the twenty K and under list there.
So are there any comments or questions regarding any of these items? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent items.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will. Do we have any questions on these? If not, if I can have a motion?
There was one. Consent items, right, Mike? I heard. Was it?
Oh, I was just over the calendar.
Right, so that, that has, that's seven, that's seven point ten. And so in looking at this, you have items that are listed here, and then you have items that are also listed in this document. I had a lengthy conversation with Claire Cunningham this afternoon about this document. The only thing that's required in the Brown Act are the dates of board meetings and times. So I am going to review this. And as Lisa brought up something to my attention during our one-on-one meeting, and I will get back to you on what this is going to look like in the future. She said you should not have it detailed like this because you never know when it's going to change.
It does.
So, so I said, Claire, I've been looking through the Brown Act. I spent an hour. I can't find it. John, you're not going to find it. That's something that someone in your district, a previous superintendent, started, and you just followed it. So we don't have to do it in this fashion, especially now that things are changing quickly. And as we move into the next couple of board meetings, you're going to be seeing items about data. You're going to be seeing items about instruction and training and so forth, and that isn't even on here. So I will revamp this. And then when we do our one-on-ones, I will give it back to you. But the dates are definitely necessary as we, as you approve the dates for the board meetings, the dates and the times. So you were, thank you, Mike.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, item eight point one, recommendation regarding adoption of resolution fifteen, authorizing electronic meetings of boards of trustees during a state of emergency pursuant to government code section five four nine five three E.
So this is something we've been doing every month for quite a while now, and the, I sent you all a memo from Claire Cunningham in regard to how this is going to move forward in sunset. And when we come back in January, it's back to similarly, similarly what we did previously. So we will review our board policy, and if you miss a meeting and you're going to be doing something virtually, which is fine, you just need to remember that it has to be placed outside the door of where you are. People would come in and listen. Or somewhere else. But you all received that memo from Claire.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve eight point one. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Eight point two, recommendation regarding adoption of resolution sixteen, approval of education code options for teaching assignments.
Ms. Kelly.
Are there any questions regarding that code option?
Having no questions, have, can I have someone move this item?
I'll make a motion to approve eight point two.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Hey, over to nine point one. Elisa, since we haven't seen you in person.
Oh, by you starting. All right.
I actually have a whole bunch of things I did the last couple of weeks. It's been a busy, busy calendar. So I was able to take a tour of Adelante Selby School, and oh my goodness, it just warmed my heart. I haven't been able to get out to the schools as much, you know, partly during the COVID and partly, you know, due to other things. So I know that many of you have been out there, and some of you still have kids in our school district, but it was just so great to see everyone back. The kids were so happy. I spent probably a good hour and a half. Warren took me on a really nice tour of lots of the classrooms and everything. So, yeah, really, really pleased with what I saw there. And then, let's see, we had a workforce housing meeting, Janet, John, and I. I also had a weekend of CSBA board meetings, and we're finalizing a new strategic plan, of which, as soon as it's finalized, we'll be letting folks know, but kind of enhancing some of the policy areas and the training areas that they've already been doing, but to really do some more there. And then, of course, they've started to do more legislative, I mean, federal legislative action. And you probably saw that there's a coast-to-coast that I went to last year, and it'll be happening again this year. Um, let's see, we had a CSBA delegate, Region Twenty and Region Five, meeting last week, and that was really nice. Our Pacer Marty Fatu, he organized that. So we've been doing more coordination with the Santa Clara folks and the San Mateo County and San Francisco. And actually, we've been getting a little more San Francisco representation, which is nice. Yeah, and then today I met with Raphael about the Redwood City Together Leadership Council. Janet and I will be co-chairing the leadership part, and John is chairing the executive part. And so I'll catch you up on that, but we're gonna have a pretty full agenda. Raphael's just doing a fantastic job, really moving us forward. So there's a lot going on, and we'll have more to report at the next board meeting. And we had a board policy meeting. You're gonna see a lot of board policies coming your way. I met with some parents who were on the North Star Forward Committee, and they had some additional requests and ideas. And I said, well, you know, I'll talk to John about some of them, and we can, you know, bring them, circle them back as needed. And then today we had a Safe Routes to Schools meeting, and our staff participated. We're doing a great job. Our community schools are doing a great job getting out the bus, the free bus passes for our kids who need them. And I think she said we'd gotten out about two hundred-plus bus passes. And last year we had six hundred, so we're kind of working through the list and trying to get them out. There was lots of questions about bus routes, and the Sam Trans person is gonna get back to us to try to help clarify that, so more of our kids understand what the routes are. And, yeah, and if you have any, you know, particular areas that you're concerned about around the schools, let me know. They are, they did get some federal grant money around down Roosevelt from El Camino, El Camino to Alameda. They'll be doing some work. They got three point something million dollars, so stay tuned on that. And then they also got some money for Bay Road. So that'll help our kids, I think, get to school safer. And I think that's it. Thanks, and it's nice to be here in person. See all of you.
Mike?
So I don't have anything to report. The two committees that I was expecting to go to in the past two weeks both got canceled, so.
Elisa covered mine. I just have the workforce housing and policy. And I don't have nothing to report.
Sitting here.
Well, last time I didn't have anything.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, and some of you already know this, I met with some Hoover parents and Michelle Ramon. And it had to do with the gunshots that were fired at Hoover Park on that first Friday that week we came back. The parents, when I first was alerted to, they had a concern. I was thinking that it was something with inside the classroom, something within that side of the school. Very concerned about safety. Safety being that Hoover School is so close to Hoover Park. And that that Sunday after the gunshots on Friday, there were people in the park, and some man flashed a gun, and then everybody went running. They immediately called the police, and police took the report. And then they went to city council to explain their concerns about what has been taking place. They then did not receive any word from city council, went to the principal, and the principal then came to me and said, there's, there's an issue here which you need to the parents. And I said, of course I would. So Michelle Ramon and myself, we met with the parent. And very upset, they're concerned regarding the safety behind Hoover School also, because there are no cameras there. They're concerned that the preschool is very close to the Boys and Girls Club, even though it is fenced. But that's where the bullet went through the window. The other piece is that the Boys and Girls Club now caters to high school students. Remember, before, it was our elementary through eighth grade, and I think what, four or five years ago, it changed. And kids are vaping and smoking, and you can smell marijuana. So they want something done. Number one, definitely, we need cameras in the back. Number two, they wanted to see, they want a wall, but I don't think we're gonna get there with a wall between Hoover and the park. And the other item is to really clean up the park because there are homeless there. And it was noted that the principal and the vice principal has escorted homeless people off the Hoover place. And they would like to see there's some patrol cars that can come several times during the day while school is in session and even on weekends. So after that meeting, I spoke with Maria. And then I asked her, what are my chances of getting a meeting with Warren? And Warren and I connected right away. And he came to a meeting with myself. We did this one on Zoom. The first one was, was in person with the parents, but this one we did on Zoom with the parents. And what Warren said he could do to help us out right away was definitely to get somebody from the county to help us with the cameras in the back of the school that we can do right away. So he's already connected me with a person from the county that wants to meet with Martin, and they'll look at the perimeter of the school, especially there in the back, and how they can put up additional cameras for us. The second thing that he asked me to do was to look into, like, maybe some type of a security guard, and maybe they would pay for that security guard to be there certain hours of the day at Hoover School. This is not an armed officer. It's a security guard that would have access to River City Police Department. And then the third thing was, he said that he would facilitate a meeting with myself, the chief, even though the chief and I spoke today about another issue, which you all got the letter about, is willing to meet, and also somebody from the city council. Because Warren Solcom said that Redwood City alone is not gonna be able to do it by themselves, like the River City Police Department, nor the River City School District. It's gonna be have, have to have a collaboration be all, between all three parties. So we'll see where we'll get with that. The other. Be all, between all three parties. So we'll see where we'll get with that. The other item that the parents did request was. They are willing and um. I think there were ten parents on a spreadsheet that Lupa sent me to become volunteers for Hoover. And to not only volunteer in the classroom, but to volunteer outside. Um, in the interim while we, while we get something together. And the item that was prohibitive. Was the cost. And so I said we would take up that cost. And um, we would make sure they get their fingerprints and so forth. It goes through HR just like any, any other volunteer does. And uh, get that going for them. So that was um. A big piece of the Hoover. Community, uh, again, very concerned uh, in regard to the safety. Well, I thought we were gonna talk instruction. I already thought we were gonna talk what teachers are doing in the classrooms. But that wasn't it. It was totally safety. So um. I know I have another meeting with them next week to tell them where we are at this point in time. And um, I will give them an update. So. That was one item. The other item was last night, Rick did a fantastic job at the River City Education Foundation. Of giving them a thirty-minute update on our budget. Lot of questions or even questions when he left. If there would have been, if they would have allotted him more time, he could have taken the whole two hours. But um. They're very interested. They definitely um. Think our funding is. That's one board member, it really messed up, but as, as I said, that is. Those are the guide, state guidelines that we need to follow. All districts in State of California follow these guidelines. So um, Rick will be. I'm sure asked to come back uh, as he does after the first interim and so forth, but um, it was a really good meeting. So. Thank you, Rick, for your presentation. So um, those are the two items for myself. The. Uh, this Hoover piece is very important. It's really important to the parents. If something uh, um. What they wanted to do first was to come before the board and Michelle Ramon said, no, you have, let's go to the superintendent first. Just like when the problem in the classroom, you go to the teacher first, as the policy says. And that doesn't work. You go to the principal and that doesn't work. You go to the superintendent. So um. They are, they, they started in that manner, so I need to make sure that I keep them up to date on what's happening. Um, a little bit, I asked Lupa uh, today because of um, what you heard in the news about the hoax with the high schools. Um, so we got parent calls and Lupa said they were kind of. Really a bit alarmed that was taking place, but I said a little bit, we're, we're sending something out. It's a hoax and Janet, thank you for sending me that article. From uh, sentencing Mercury uh, was fantastic because we used it um, when we sent the information out. But um, uh, Chief Mahalan was very busy today when I tried to get ahold of him as soon as a parent called. Cause parents are calling the school sites about this issue. And so the principals were calling me and I said. I haven't heard anything yet. So Evelyn got on the phone and she called the police department and she got back to me. And um, and then after that, the county contacted all the superintendents in regard to what was taking place. So um. Back to Hoover, they are a bit alarmed even more so with what took place today, even though it was a hoax. So I'll keep you updated um, as we move forward, but um. We really need to. See if Boys and Girls Club can also help us with what's going on with the vaping and so forth. That's outside that, that area. One, one item that I forgot to mention that the parents did say um. Cause one thing that they wanted also was um, on Woodside Road. As you go down Woodside Road and the fencing along Woodside Road. By the Boys and Girls Club and the park area, it's a chain link fence. And they said, is there any way that the city, and I think they even, they approached Warren about it also. If they could put something like more of a wall, because I guess. Several months ago, um. Not one of our students, but a high school student, they're playing basketball and somebody just was either driving or riding a bike. Uh, down Woodside Road and was just shooting and it grazed one of the kids that was playing basketball. And he didn't even realize it until the other kids said, you're bleeding. And um, so that brought up more concerns. So I will, as I said, I will keep you informed as we move down this road. It may be um. I know we've been trying to have those two by two by two meetings and they get, they get canceled and then there's another doodle for us. To partake in. Um, and, and so uh, I will. Definitely see if I can get Melissa to come to this meeting, you know, that we have achieved.
Not on that cheering note. Uh, ten point one, quarterly Williams report. Do we have any comments or questions? No? Ten point two, information of San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any comments or questions? None? Okay, we went through correspondence, twelve point one. Um, since we're all here, let's not do any more doodles and can we set um. A time for the board to meet for John's evaluation? Let's get our calendars out. Can we do it the nineteenth? Either in person or remotely? I'm sorry? No, no, um, like uh, six thirty? None of those other times work. Yes, in the evening. Would that work? Six thirty? Okay. So would you prefer in person or remotely? So we can get the Zoom thing. What's easier? Okay, then let's meet in person since we haven't seen each other. Perfect, we'll meet here. Six thirty on the nineteen. Thank you. And now to thirteen point one. Um, this evening I would like to adjourn in the memory of Peter Fortenbaum. Who uh, was a wonderful partner and did a lot for our students. And for our whole community. He was a go-getter. He got lots of grants. Uh, my nephew was always. Saying to Warren, did you give him more money? Cause he's supposed to have more programs for us. And then it turned into the high school students and he was quite disappointed because he wasn't old enough. So, but Peter was a wonderful person. So um. He's gonna be missed quite a bit. He made a tremendous impact. In our community. Okay, so with that. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Good night.